All right, we are live at is five o'clock. Looks like we're playing old home week. Welcome everyone to the regular town council meeting town of Cave Creek, Arizona, Monday, March 7th, 2022. Teresa, the role please.
I'm right here.
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 Here. No, here. All right. Let's see here. An executive session will be held. Person of discussion, consultation, direction, and legal advice for the town attorney pursuant to Arizona revised statute thirty eight dash four thirty one dot zero three. Prince A Prince three regarding the process for filling a vacancy on council. The other item is discussion consultation, direction, and legal advice for the town attorney pursuant to thirty eight dash four thirty one dot zero three Prince A Prince three regarding Cohava Springs. We have motion to move into session.
So move second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, hi, everyone. Welcome to the regular town council meeting town of Cave Creek, Arizona, Monday, March 7th, 2022. Uh, let's see pledge of allegiance. Actually, no, first we get to do a roll call. We already did roll call. We already did roll call before you guys got here. Okay. Pledge of allegiance. Let's see here. Who's hiding behind that sign right there? Susan, would you give a? It's under public announcement, but I'm going to point out that we've had some nice cool weather, a little bit of rain, and we've got this nasty stink net popping up all over the darn place and stuff I've sprayed. It's kind of like it said, thank you. It's didn't seem to be working on it. So probably be after with a weed eater here pretty quick, but just because we got a fire department don't need what doesn't mean we don't need to take care of our properties. Call the public.
Bruce Arlen.
Good evening, council. I just wanted to thank Kerry and you guys, the town of Cave Creek for for uh supporting our Cave Creek Dark Sky Initiative. We had this incredible over 500 people on the on the nineteenth Saturday, the nineteenth, and went super well. People were really happy. As usual, it gets a little cold. Try to encourage people to bundle up, but a bunch of people don't and they forget and the wind comes in. It gets real cold, but other than that, it went so well. And I wanted to say I did a little straw poll. I sent out a communication to the people on our Facebook member page and the contact list and the amount of people that wrote back to answer this question, which is, did you stop in any of the restaurants, any of the venues like Janie's or Harold's, et cetera, before or after? Did you spend money in Cave Creek? And almost 50% that answered did. And uh, and they said that they were planning on doing it again. So I wanted you guys to know that you have an event like that. It's not just about dark skies. It's about people coming up. Everybody, by the way, didn't doesn't live in Cave Creek. Majority does. But people from Phoenix, Mesa, there were people from Chandler, there were people from Goodyear, obviously Scottsdale and Carefree, and they spent money in this town. And I just wanted you to know that. I felt really great about that. And I'm making that report to you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce.
Thanks, Mr. O. That's the only one we had?
Well.
Town manager.
Mayor, members of council, we have some folks in the audience that will be happy to hear that we're going to address some of the safety issues, the traffic control, and hopefully cut down on vandalism out on the west side on the roadway that leads up to Cohava Springs. We will begin the installation process for a gate beginning within a week or so. And after that, put in some traffic control devices to address some of the the racing and signage, of course, for safety notifying any drivers that the road will be closed, no trespassing and the flashing lights that are actually above where the residential areas are located. So it'll at least be a start to try to address the safety issues out in that area. And so the Public Works crew will be working on that probably next week, the week after next, or not this week, next week. Sorry. Another couple of things. The there's a reminder out. I know we did some social media, but the brush drop off, the last one, we had two scheduled for this spring is Saturday, March 12th. As the mayor mentioned, we've had a some rain and cool weather. There's a lot of growth. So if you clean up your property and brush, you can drop that off at the water ranch, which is over at forty fourth street and Carefree Highway on Saturday, March 12th from eight o'clock until noon for residents only. And then this is your last opportunity. We'd like participation by the residents, customers of the town to answer questions on a fairly short satisfaction survey that's available. It was it was on the back of the newsletter that went out with a QR code, but you can go to the town's website at cave creek az.gov and click on on the link to take the survey through midnight, the night of of so it's tomorrow night midnight between the eighth and the ninth. So we've got all day and all night tomorrow to take that survey. We'd really appreciate it. We've got well over a hundred people that have already taken that as of last count about a week ago. So if you would be so kind, if you haven't to or pass the message on to your neighbors and friends, we'd appreciate it. Thank you. Carrie, can you repeat how many responded? It was it was over a hundred. I don't remember the exact number, one hundred and twenty five or one hundred and thirty, something like that. Yeah.
Well, I got somebody sitting back there holding his hand, but we passed the call, the public portion of it. Well, you know what? Go if you can I let him ask a question about the town manager's report? Yeah, you step up to the microphone and yeah, there we go. I knew there was a way to do this.
Fashion statement. My name is Michael Wolf. I live at four zero three one five North Thirty Second Street. I want to thank Kerry for her update. I was just kind of curious as as I know our community is approximate timelines for the gate and then the Jersey barriers. If we can get some clarification on that for the record, that's it.
Yeah, get closer to the microphone, Kerry. I think maybe it would go carry it.
So the the work will start in about a week to install the gate. So hopefully in a in a couple of weeks, that gate will be up. The crew is installing it themselves. So we already have the material. We've already bought the concrete and things that that's all ready to go. After that, and sort of simultaneously, we'll be marking out where the Jersey barriers will actually be placed. And once we know that, we can install those later. We because we have to bring that in after the gate is built. We also have signage that some is on order and it's going to take a while and the locks are not going to be in for maybe five to 10 days or so. So I would say within about two weeks, we should be pretty much there. Okay. And and three on the outside, I would say.
Okay, for for everything to be done?
I think so. Is Hal here? Is that?
Yeah, hi, Hal.
Am I am I putting any words in your mouth now? Okay. All right.
That that clears it up. Thank you.
Okay.
All right. Consent agenda. Approval of the February twenty second, twenty twenty two, regular council meeting minutes. And that's the only thing that's on there. We have motions.
So move second.
All in favor? Post. I swear, have general agenda item number one, council consideration, possible approval of special event application for Cave Creek Bike Week during the period of April first through April tenth, twenty twenty two.
Mayor, members of council, the town code section one fourteen point oh two C states that we have to bring the special event permits to council for approval if it is more than a period of time longer than four consecutive days per week. And so as we've done in the past over two weekends are the Bike Week activities. Marshall Adam Stein will present, and I believe oh, you're hiding behind me. So we have representatives from the sheriff's office. So I think hopefully you'll have all your questions answered this evening. Thanks.
I was afraid Arland had a warrant or something.
The day is still young.
What?
The day is still young. Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, I appreciate the opportunity to present this this evening. As town manager stated, section one fourteen account town code, special events requires us to come to town council, get approval for Bike Week. It is over four consecutive days. Bike Week this year begins one April and will end ten April of this year. For the past approximately, we have some debate over this, eight to 10 years, Lieutenant Baranios has spearheaded the off duty detail and the paid details for Bike Week. He's worked very diligently with the town as well as businesses and the event continues to grow in popularity and with popularity comes more and more traffic and more and more complaints about traffic. I'd like to tell you that we were able to get traffic down to approximately six minutes and forty seconds during peak traffic times, beginning at Schoolhouse Road, terminating at Scopa Trail. So basically Schoolhouse Scopa Trail Bridge is just outside, heading in the eastbound direction. Again, the event grows with popularity and like any event, you know, if it's popular, people are going to come and we're going to get increased traffic vehicular as well as pedestrian traffic. The event typically costs approximately seventy five thousand dollars for law enforcement alone for the event. Forty five thousand is absorbed by the Maricopa County Sheriff's Office. Thank you very much, Commander. And approximately thirty thousand is absorbed by the business that holds a special event. This particular would be the hideaway and the roadhouse. Commander Brandon Martin came to our precinct, how many years ago now? Almost two years and he's been working with us on Bike Week and tweaking it. Obviously, it COVID. So last year was a little bit of a different event. This year will be a good year for the captain to see just how well things run when we have Bike Week. We've worked very hard with Daisy Mountain as well as the Cave Creek Fire Department, obviously. Chief Ford's been very instrumental as well. We've been holding meetings almost weekly in reference to Bike Week with emergency responders preparing for this event. I'm not going to sit here and tell you that there will not be traffic delays because that'd be rubbish. There will be traffic delays. There will be, again, increased volumes of vehicular traffic as well as pedestrian traffic. But I will tell you that we'll do our best to keep traffic flowing. Our priority is vehicular traffic to keep it flowing. But at the end of the day, public safety is what our business is, and we'll do what's safe for the residents and for the visitors to the town of Cave Creek. But again, we understand that keeping traffic flowing is a very important and very near and dear to our residents, our council, and our businesses. So we'll do our best to do that. And again, Lieutenant Baranios will be leading the charge with the off duty detail and the on duty detail this year, and Captain Brad will be here as well. So we're very grateful that the sheriff's office brings these resources to us. It is a very large event, has a lot of moving pieces. But thank God, we're able to pull off the event without any major incidents throughout the years. With how we happen to answer any of your questions.
Mayor.
Former Vice Mayor Silva.
Marshall Stein, just to clarify a couple of things. The event obviously runs from the first, or I'm sorry, the second to the tenth. And on the fourth, fifth, and sixth, all four lanes of traffic will be open. Correct? It's only on the second and third and the seventh through the tenth. They'll be restricted.
Correct. Former Vice Mayor.
Okay. And the second question was, I just wanted to make sure I understand the schematic on page one or fifteen in my book that the parking parking lot for the roadhouse will once again be used for vendors and it will not be for cycle parking. Is that correct?
During the peak days.
During the peak days. Correct. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Councilman Morris.
The six minute delay is disturbing. That's a lot of time for vehicles to wait. And and I I've noticed there that the vehicular and pedestrian controlled will stop the whole line of traffic to let one person, two people, three people cross the street. And it creates chaos for vehicular. I I just I'd like what can be done to keep the traffic moving safely as well as keeping the pedestrians controlled so that we have a safe interaction.
I believe we do a good job of keeping traffic flowing and pedestrian flowing. It's a very tough balance. You're dealing with, again, a very large amount of people. I don't believe that we let one person cross.
I've seen it.
Okay, perhaps we have, but it's not our goal. Our goal is always to stack the pedestrians and then cross them in groups. This way, we don't have a backup of traffic. Again, we're very sensitive to the fact that we want to keep traffic flowing in the town.
Which do you prioritize?
I prioritize public safety.
Now, I'm not I'm talking. Yes, we all do. Which do you prioritize? The pedestrians or the vehicles to keep it moving?
I make a decision based on what's safe, sir. Whatever I determine to be safe at that time, that's the decision I'll make. My goal is to keep traffic flowing. I would prefer to keep vehicular traffic flowing at all times. However, I understand that I have to let pedestrians cross as well. And I do it in a safe manner, as do the deputies of the sheriff's office. I can't. I can't sit there and watch the deputies every second saying, hey, wait a second. We have fifteen people. We have five people. We have 10 people. Lieutenant Baranios has been doing it a long time. He does a very good job, in my opinion. Again, they are very sensitive to the fact that we have to keep traffic flowing, but we bring in a huge volume of traffic. This is a very large event, probably the largest event the town has. With that increased traffic and increased pedestrians, unfortunately, results in some delays.
Well, I'm going on my personal observations that the pedestrians in years past have been prioritized over the vehicle. That's my observation. It's anecdotal. You have a six minute. I urge you to have some kind of metric on how well we are moving vehicular. That is the quality measure that I'm looking at is how fast a vehicular traffic safely move through town because that is the part of the of the event that would get it canceled. As if it is so inconvenient to residents that it doesn't become worth it to the residents because the residents are inconvenienced. So I would just urge you to measure it so that we have a a firm measure of how how much inconvenience we're causing the traffic moving through town.
Councilman Murray.
First of all, I'd like to clarify one thing. It's really not a town event, is it?
It's not town sponsored.
No, it's not a town sponsored event. It's really a special event hosted by
Private business.
Private businesses. Correct. Does the town contribute any kind of funding for this event?
Manpower.
Manpower. Staffing, you're out. Okay. Do you know if the private businesses were able to secure any kind of additional parking for either bikes or cars from other neighboring businesses?
We had a meeting with Mark Bradshaw and his partner. They said that they have spoken to the new owners of the Rebel who will be participating this year. Also, they said that twenty, I get too confused. I'm so sorry. The business next door to the hideaway is participating this year. Historically, they were not participating, but this year they will be participating. So we'll give additional parking to there as well.
Is that the business that's under construction?
No, that's a town dump. I'm referring to satisfied frog.
Oh, they're going to be cooperating with some additional parking. That's 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 good news.
Historically, they didn't participate in Bike Week, but Abe says he wanted to participate this year.
Okay, because that could alleviate some of the traffic congestion is if we have some additional parking availability. Or if there's any kind of shuttling back and forth from one end of town to another, that would help too, because obviously that's the issue. There's just not a lot of parking. People are searching for parking as they're driving down that way. So that was my question. If anybody was able to secure any additional parking.
Well, we also have historically, they don't use it that often, but we have Iowa Lane, which has been improved since our last significant Bike Week. It's been widened. It's been flattened a little better.
Will there be any signage to direct people over there to park there?
No additional signage directing people to park there, but the hideaway staff and the roadhouse staff will have aides helping people park and directing them to stay off the roadway.
Okay. Are do you know if like the Buffalo Chip, are they charging for parking? You don't know that. Okay. I think in some cases in the past, I think some of the businesses have charged like $10 per car to park. I'm not sure if that was helpful or not. Okay, well, good luck. We do support you. We know how hard it is and we do wish you the best of luck. I'm sure a lot of us will be down there watching you in action.
Councilman Silva.
Thank you, Mayor. Two additional questions, Marshall. The state has their Bike Week and the second through the tenth coincides with the state of Arizona Bike Week festivities that are down in Scottsdale.
Westworld.
Westworld.
Yes, sir.
Right. And the second question is, I'm not sure I understood when you said, does it take an additional six minutes to get through town when the cycles are parked on the street? Or is it six minutes inclusive of the standard two or three minutes it would take to have gotten through town?
Six minutes and forty seconds coming from Schoolhouse Road to Scopa Trail during Bike Week in total.
Okay. And what's the what would the timeframe be without the event?
Typically, that would probably be about a two minute. If I'm estimating, I don't typically, but I've I've taken probably two or three minutes. The way Ryan drives, probably a minutes.
So effectively, it's approximately approximately five minutes longer to get through town. Which would be on those on those two weekends.
Correct.
Okay, thank you, sir.
This is this has been going on since the recession as far as as far as a Bike Week being part of Cape Creek. But was wasn't there a period prior to that that we actually had had Bike Week in town and may it got stopped? Or something, something.
Two thousand and two. There was a Bike Week, maybe not to the same extent that's grown. And in two thousand and eight is when the Bike Week as we see it today began, my in my recollection. It was a recession. The town manager at the time had asked any of the businesses if he had any great ideas. Now would be the time. And this was what Brett was great idea.
That's that's where it came from, but it's hard to stop Boulder rolling down the hill. Yeah, okay. That was a comment should have been a question, isn't it?
I wouldn't try.
Yeah. All right, there is. Okay. Don't doesn't say public comment on this thing, but there is public comment on this one. I'm going to read the first one. We got one from, let's see here. Brief description of agenda. He's curious about noise hours of operation for Bike Week. Why comments read aloud? Can the council please address this evening what plans are in place to effectively address noise abatement and time limits on Bike Week festivities? Can you assure neighbors that noise enforcement will be in effect and enforced throughout the entirety of the festival? And that's from Dan Nicholas on Schoolhouse Road. You have more?
I do. Susan Clancy.
Well, I'm in favor of Bike Week simply because it brings in revenue to the town. I've driven up and down that road ever since I was on council, and I think they do an amazing job. They do need to get four or five or six people because as the day goes on, people are so busy talking and having fun and crossing back and forth on the streets that if we don't retain them and get a group, they'll just start walking across the street and makes it harder. I I think for most of us it's kind of fun. It really is. And I got a lot of bikers in my family. I started out on a motorcycle when I was in seventh grade, actually, on a base. And I loved my bike. My brother just bought a bike and it's thirty two thousand dollars. So you can't judge a biker by Bike Week. This is not the Hells Angels anymore, and people come up here to have fun, and it's only a few weekends out of the day. And I'm I was really glad when I drove down there recently and the place is packed. In fact, I got a signature from one guy and he goes, I'm on my way down there right now to have a beer. So those bars, they have done an amazing job over the time that I've been I was on council, and they care a great deal about what goes on and inside their bars. So we're lucky. Take care.
Thank you. No more? Back to counseling. You know what? I'll go ahead and do it. It's that time of year. Motion to approve the special event application for Cave Creek Bike Week during the period of April first or April tenth, twenty twenty two.
I'll second that.
As Marshall Stein indicated, this was requested by the town manager, former town, former former town manager at a time when the economy was really, really bad. And he called Mr. Bradshaw and Mr. Bradshaw has related to me that he told him, but once you start this, you won't be able to stop. You've got seventy five thousand Harleys that show up at at Westworld or or so for for this festivity. And at that time that that the decision was made for Cave Creek through through the former former town manager. Cave Creek became part of the event for people that come to the state of Arizona. I can only imagine what the chaos would be if we did not approve the special event permit. Because those people are coming anyway. There wouldn't be any law enforcement. The the sheriff's department would have an absolute mess to deal with. There wouldn't be any traffic control. The bikes would be parked all over the place. There are thirty, as as Susan said, that her brother's bike was thirty two thousand. And I happen to know that's a Honda. I'm not sure he's allowed to bring it into town, but a lot of the Harleys are forty five, fifty thousand dollars. They don't want to park them on dirt. They want to park them on pavement, and that's what they're going to do whether we make provisions for them or not, in which case it becomes a huge mess and you don't want well, for those of you that are old enough, an Altamonte type thing that happened over in California years ago when the Hells Angels took care of security at a at a at a rock concert. So this is the best way to protect ourselves. It may be inconvenient for two weekends, but it is approving this is the is the only choice forward that we have based on what it has become. And it's the only way to have any control over it at all. Councilmen.
Just a couple of comments. I live in the town core and until recently, I had a Harley Road King. Used, not new. And I can tell you that the both weekends for the last several years, I've walked through town and talked to people enjoying a beer, a cup of coffee, a hamburger. And everybody that I talked to was there from out of state, and they so much enjoy coming to our town because it is a destination. And they can go to West. And they can go to Westworld and have something that's, I don't know how many times larger. Have to park two, three, four blocks away. They have to pay a fee to get in. They can drive out here, park basically in front of the establishment they'd like to go into or maybe a block away. There's no admission fees. And I just think people have a good time and most of the people that I've run into already booked their rooms for the, for next year during Bike Week. These are people that have the, the three wheel, the trikes and the, what is it? The one with the wheel, just one in front. Cam, cam, cam and or whatever. And they enjoy it. So I think it's, 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 it's a lot of fun and we are a destination town and this is a destination event. And for the additional sales tax we get. And more importantly, I think Ms. Clancy pointed out, these are people that come up here and are introduced to our town perhaps for the first time and they'll come back. And they will enjoy our restaurants and our beer gardens and our shopping up here. So the town benefits from that. So I think it's a win-win. Yes, it's a little inconvenience on especially those two weekends, but I think it's well worth it.
Councilman McGuire.
I also have a motorcycle license. I wanted to, been a while. I wanted to point out that I spoke to one of the business people a couple of years ago and said that the business had brought in $30,000 from his establishment for the benefit of the town.
Councilman Morris?
Yeah, the, I did some real quick calculations and we're taking out about eighty percent of our capacity to move traffic through town through this way. And admittedly, my, this isn't about having Bike Week. This is about putting in mitigation to the inconvenience. And six minutes, six minutes per mile is, works out to 10 miles an hour. We're down to one lane, 10 miles an hour versus two lanes at 30 miles an hour. So that's, that's knocking out about eighty percent of our capacity to move traffic through town. My anecdotal observations is that the key to a successful Bike Week management is control of the pedestrians. Keeping traffic moving through town so that the the economy, the rest of the economy of the town works too. Other businesses in town are irritated because they don't make extra money on Bike Week. There are a number of them have told me to see opposite. But I'm in favor, it's not about Bike Week. It's about how we manage the pedestrian vehicle interface to keep the amount of inconvenience to a minimum. And if I can sit here and do this kind of math and come up with this, we ought to be able to come up with a measurement. Something on the street to measure the amount of traffic moving through town, the speed moving through town. The six minutes can be converted over to, to a capacity which I've done here just now. And I'd like to see the town come up with a analytical measure of how good a job we're doing. That's the way to take all the questions away about how well we are moving pedestrians across the street at the same time, keeping traffic moving through town as much as possible. So I'm going to vote in favor of this. And I will be back anecdotally monitoring how good a job we do keeping traffic moving. So.
Councilmember Roy.
I also think that there are ways to move traffic in the other direction. We can go, there's two ways to get out of town and we can encourage drivers to go the opposite way of town. I live off Schoolhouse and I will turn right. Even if I have to go to Tom Darlington, I will go around the mountain, out of my way, just to avoid that direction and that traffic, those two weekends. And I think that we can use signage and I think that we should. We have blinking signs. We should use our blinking signs that we have at our availability to encourage drivers to be aware that there's Bike Week traffic that, in that direction and to use the roundabout the other direction to avoid Bike Week traffic. We should do our best to communicate with our residents to avoid Bike Week traffic. If they don't want to get in the midst of that. Because there are other ways to help the traffic move along. So we don't have people get in the middle of it all. Because we do have other ways around it. People on Spur Cross could go the other direction as well. We have two ways in and out of town. And we need to remember that and we can use signage to remind our residents.
I forgot to mention, I have an 86-year-old, almost 86-year-old father who's got a Harley trike and I hope he doesn't come up here that weekend. Vote please. All in favor of the motion? Signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries six zero, wherever they're at, I hope. Gentlemen, be safe.
Thank you.
Item number two. See if I can get rid of this frog in my throat. Council approval of resolution R 2022 dash zero three declaring as a public record a certain document filed with the town clerk and entitled 2021 International Building Code, 2021 International Residential Code, 2021 International Plumbing Code, 2021 International Mechanical Code, 2020 National Electric, Electric Code, 2021 International Fire Code, 2021 International Existing Building Code, 2021 International Fuel Gas Code and 2021 International Energy Conservation Code. Mr. Baxley?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I got to apologize right off the bat because I think this is like the most lengthy adoption language you have to have all year long. Good thing it only comes up every three years.
It usually is you that does this to us.
I try. Real, real quick, a a little bit of background about the international codes, where they come from. I, I thought about stacking these up here and, and getting an idea, but I sit a little bit taller. If I was a shorter person, it would probably block me and then I wouldn't be able to see everybody staring back, but that wasn't possible. So the international codes or as referred to sometimes as I codes, they're model codes that are published by the International Code Council and developed by ICC members to provide minimum safeguards for homes, buildings and other structures. ICC uses a governmental consensus method to develop these codes. What that means is if somebody, anybody wants to make a change to the codes that are finally published, you present that to the committee. Committee votes gives an up or down on it, gives that information on to the council as a whole. Voting members out there, then eventually will vote on that up or down and that's how it makes it into the code. Cave Creek has four votes in that process. There, the international codes are in all 50 states, either as state codes or as individual jurisdictional, but they exist in all 50 states as well as internationally too. Where they come from? These codes came about from the merging of three different code councils that were out there at the, at the time. Back in 1994, we had the, a lot of people out here remember I CBO, which was the International Council of Building Officials. We also had Boca for people on the East Coast, which was the Building Officials and Code Administrators. And then the SBCCI, which was the Southern Building Code. I got to even read this Congress International. They all combined to create this one conglomerate, which now produces these codes that stretch out internationally. They produce currently 15 codes. Cave Creek does not use all 15 codes. There's many that we don't use. What we do try and adopt in Cave Creek has been historically, we, we adopt the International Building Code, the International Residential Code, the International Mechanical Code, Plumbing Code, the Fuel Gas Code, the Existing Building Code and the Energy Conservation Code. We also will adopt the National Electric Code, which is created by a different organization, also known as NFPA, the National. Thank you. I wanted to say Federation for the life, man, I knew it was wrong. Fire Protection Agency. Reason we use that code as opposed to the electric code put out by ICC, that's the standard used across almost all of Arizona. Everybody uses the National Electric Code as their electric code basis. And then we, pretty much everybody else is using the I codes for everything else. So going forward, notable changes and, and there were multiple pages put together. But the notable changes that we had that could be of interest is, so in the IBC this, this time around, there's going to be a, there's now a requirement that in commercial projects, you must have 500 gallons per minute of fire flow on site before you can drop combustible material on site. Which means commercial places are going to have to complete some of their infrastructure before they start stockpiling wood on the properties. Another one that, that we adopt here in Cave Creek is out of the fire code. And we go to the extra step of adopting the appendix B, which is the fire flow requirements for buildings and structures. Reason we go through and do that kind of thing is because it has this one little caveat that's in there. And it says, if in rural communities such as Cave Creek, where there may not be fire flow there, it allows us to use the wildland urban interface to provide landscaping in there and make sure that they don't have buildings that have vegetation right up against them. So in a case of a wildland fire, we won't be losing buildings or we greatly mitigate that risk by going with that. Other areas of note on here is that the residential code this year as well as the energy code, they create, they came out and they wanted to have R 49 in the attics. R 49 is 16 inches of insulation that is going to be put in the attic. We amended that to, back to where we were this year to R 38. Couple of reasons for that. Cost benefit analysis isn't that much, but more importantly, if you have a two by 12 and you're trying to insulate your, your framing conventionally, use a two by 12, that's 12 inches. You can get your 12 inches in there. You can't get R 49 in there. So we're basically telling everybody they would have to come up with two by 16s at that point in time, which are even readily available this, these days. That also keeps us in line with what other jurisdictions are doing. And other jurisdictions are talking about doing is sticking with the R 38 and not making that jump to the R 49. That's kind of one of those ideas where we're trying to keep commonality across the board throughout all the jurisdictions. So that way we can keep some sort of standard for builders as they build in different jurisdictions. Another great piece for the code this year is whether you know it or not, whenever you build a house and you have sewer and vents and they're sticking up, you have to have them tested. Currently, you're putting water in those things and the guys always have a hard time with the amount of water you got to put in there to test event because it blows out the plug. Now they've augmented that and allowed for a vacuum test on there. So you can actually put them together and then put a vacuum test on to see if it leaks. A vacuum will hold much less pressure is what it's going to take. And then we also went through and took a look in, in both the International Building Code and the International Residential Code. There are exceptions to what is required to have a permit. Basically, the code says you need a permit to build except for these items. And we went through and, and took a look at it and made everything that wasn't matching the same. Case in point would be in one book said, you didn't need to have a building code for a building of 400 square feet. The other one said you didn't need to have it for one of 120 square feet. We made those match so that way there's no confusion across the board.
Which way did you make them match?
Made them at the 120 because the building code required the 120. That being said, those are the highlights of the changes. If you look through this document, you'll notice that almost all the changes that were made were in chapter one of each book. That means chapter 101. That's the administrative portion. The administrative portion. Each book is, is created by a different committee. They get to write their own administrative portion and they don't always match up. So what we do is our best is to go through and make sure that the same penalty clause are in each one, the same requirements for application is across the board in each one. Because in my mind, I don't want to have to try and remember 10 different administrative clauses on which book is the one that we're going to actually have to rule out of. Going forward, there was a, an error that I found in here. And you will find it on page 93 of your packet, 93 of 114. Now, as we were going through this and asking other jurisdictions for their information, this one came across and to be quite honest, I got it out of what would be the energy code. Unfortunately, the residential code duplicated this piece and it's section N 1104.5. It's Electrical Vehicle Charging Infrastructure. And what that does is that forces us to require in every single house, somebody to put a electrical vehicle charging station in that house or have capacity for it. I, I already told one of the council members when we were talking that we weren't including that in there and because I knew I deleted it out of one. But unfortunately I missed it out of the other one. So as we are going forward tonight, and if you have questions about this, but if, when you adopt, we would want to remove in 1104.5 through 1104.5.2. With that, I did, there was an email sent out to council members today because this afternoon I received a email from the Arizona Home Builders Association asking that they, that we would talk about amending out another section, which would be 408 of the International Energy Conservation Code. That is not included in your packet for you as this was published in advance of that. And with that, I will take any questions that you may have.
Councilman Silver.
Mr. Baxley, four questions. These new IBC codes, they're replacing the ones that were in effect in 2018?
So currently we have adopted the 2018 codes. They, we, we adopted those in 2000 and stretching my memory here, 19. I think they had a January effective date back then. And these will replace those codes.
Approximately, how often are they updated?
Every three years.
Every three years? Okay. And the next question is, when would this go into effect?
July 1.
And how do we, or do we notify builders, home builders, developers that it's going into effect? And oh, then well, strike that. And then is there a drop dead date that they have to submit a set of plans under the current 2018 IBC codes before they have to change their plans and resubmit them under the 2021 code?
So let's see if I can remember all of those rolled into one here. So we will go ahead and publish this on our town website along with any of the amendments that are, are taking care or that are approved. We also notify Maricopa Association of Governments. They have a running total of every jurisdiction and what codes that they are and then their adoption dates on there too. Most builders already know that those places exist and keep tabs on them. Where it really comes into an issue is whenever we start talking about production builders, people building multiple units of the same house over and over. Through that, we use a process where we create a standard plan. They come in, they have to go plan review one time. They get to come in, tell us the options after we reviewed and approved that set of plan for them to build. They give us, they come and apply, they say, I want to build Plan X with option B, D and G. And then we can And then we can just go ahead and push that out for that process. They don't get, they don't pay a second plan review fee. We only have one, one company right now that has standard plans for houses on file with us. And I believe they just pulled their last ones for their project. So we don't have any others beyond that.
Mr. Sims had something.
We got a little premature. Right now this action item is simply declaring this.
Yeah, we're declaring the, yeah, we're getting ahead of ourselves.
What you could do is you could move to item three, which would allow all this conversation and then do the two simultaneous.
So you want me to read item three now? And I'll go and do that. Counsel discussion, first reading of ordinance 2021 or 2022 dash zero one, adoption of the 2021 International Building Code. 2021 International Residential Code, 2021 International Plumbing Code, 2021 International Mechanical Code, 2020 National Electric Code. 2021 International Fire Code, 2021 International Existing Building Code, 2021 International Fuel Gas Code and 2021 International Energy Conservation Code and their amendments. So now we're talking about both of them.
Ditto to what I said earlier. Ditto to what I said earlier.
Oh, you're not going to tell us again?
You know, I could. Okay.
Don't. A question from counsel, Councilman Morris.
Are are equipment suppliers like air conditioning, air conditioning manufacturers and electronic vehicle manufacturer, are they on these committees?
So committees are made up of members and some of them are, they jurisdictional code or the committees are made up of voting members. Not all the organizations that are out there, suppliers and those kinds of things are voting members, but they have the opportunity. But anybody has the opportunity to present and create an amendment or a change to the code. So Councilman Morris could decide I want to do whatever with the code. You write up your code change, present it. Get it into the committee process and it will go through the vote process and spit out the other end with either an up or a down.
Okay. It's, is what you're proposing consistent with the rest of Maricopa County?
Well, right now, most of rest of Maricopa County, there are some jurisdictions adopting, some jurisdictions are skipping the code cycle. In in general, in conformance, we are moving in that direction where we will be in in general conformance with all the other jurisdictions.
And am I correct in saying that that we, we really don't have the staffing to go through all those books?
Well, we got me, myself and I.
Right.
There's three of us.
Thanks.
Anything else from counsel? Vice Mayor?
First, I'd, I'd like to thank you for mentioning that the EV charging infrastructure is going to be deleted from this. Cause I, I hit that and I said, holy cow, we're talking big bucks here. And and sometimes unnecessary. Did you say that the issue that was in that series of emails back and forth that we were provided? That that issue is not really relevant to what as we're being we're reviewing tonight because it is not included? No, did I misunderstand what you said?
What I was saying is it's not in the document because this was prepared well in advance of the email that you got today. So if you guys want to go forward and talk about section 408 of the energy code and remove that. Because Mr. Mull from the Home Builders Association is here and I'm sure he wants to talk about it at some point in time. Is that would be a process that you guys could give direction to staff to do that kind of thing. It would come back at the second reading or we could just move forward as however it is set now in the code.
Then do you have any idea what the reason would be for having a GFI circuit for air conditioning unit? But I've never walked by an air conditioning thing on the side of a house and been concerned that you know, electricity is going to jump out at me.
So what we're not taught, we're, well, I can probably goes back to Councilman Morris, whether industry has a role in this. If I had to bet people making the GFI circuit breakers had a role in getting that across. If you want to know if suppliers got a role in this, that I guarantee you they have a role.
Well, I wasn't surprised when the other side said that's $2,600 to do this. I go.
Real so that to go back to the GFI circuit breaker issue that we were talking about, and that is, it's not what everybody thinks is an outlet and I'm plugging in my air conditioner. No, this is the the main two pole circuit breaker, 30, 40, 50 amp that is going to be managing the condenser outside the house. Most of the houses in Cave Creek have them sitting on the ground.
I know I got two boxes sitting beside the house. You can turn them on and off to to do that.
Those are your disconnect.
And and this would, the recommendation would be to have that be a ground fault interrupter. No, it's not.
No, it would be the breaker in your panel. That would be ground fault circuit interrupter.
Oh, okay.
Now, the information that they gave today, I have not heard of any challenges. It hasn't been brought up on whether or not that is causing issues. This is new information today to me saying that, you know, that the GF CI breaker would have, would be an issue. And and in reading through that, the state of Texas is had put a stay of execution on it. And their information going forward. If you were to not amend that out out of the NEC and we found that it would become an issue, I would be right back in front of you saying, hey, we're going to amend this thing and change it.
Okay, thank you.
So the recommendation on that one is to take it out or leave it in.
I don't have enough information to give you a recommendation yet. I got one source so far.
So let's leave, leave that one up in the air for the second read as well.
Mayor. Question for Mr. Backsley.
Well, yes, Councilman Silva.
Educate me a little bit for electronic or electric cars, which depending on what you read and see several years from now will be at 50% level. I don't know. Am I correct that if you pull it in your garage and you've got a dedicated line or circuit for it, that will work? It'll just take a long time to charge. But the real cost involved is if you want to have a, I don't know what the terminology is, a fast charge. That requires a box and that's, I've been told about $2,500. Am I somewhere close that the basic unit wouldn't be that expensive?
Partially. One of the big challenges is, is you go out and buy an electric car and you have a electric panel in your house that is already maxed out and you got to come up with 40 amps to do that. Now you're changing a panel out. There's an additional cost. That piece that I asked you to take out because it was not concurrent with what we had done already in the energy code. That was saying you were going to have a dedicate dedicated circuit breaker run into your garage that you can't use for anything else. And so if by some chance you buy an electric car someday and you put it in your car, you would have the ability to charge it at that point in time.
Do you, if, would you have a concern that if we had a crystal ball and it showed us that in several years, there's going to be quite a few electric cars? And if just about all the garages will not be equipped with anything to accommodate them. That people might go out and just put one in a standard, what is it? 110 or 220?
Well, 240, 240. Last time, last time I was in front of council and somebody talked to me about a crystal ball. It was when everything crashed in like 2007. So I'm a little shaky on whether or not my crystal ball works or not. But um, I, I can tell you because I was, I was in Pittsburgh when we did votes for the 2024s coming up. And I know that didn't make it into the 2024s. So you have a three year reprieve from now. Okay. That you won't see it in the 2024s. I guarantee you the industry is going to come back and ask us to try and put it in. Cause we'll have more electric cars by then.
When, when you say the industry will ask put it back in, will it be just a standard slow charging system or the rapid charge system?
What can you afford?
Well, at that point in time, probably neither.
I've just, I just pointed, that's the one that they're going to want to put you, put you into. Rapid charge one or the, the, the slow overnight one?
Thank you.
The assumption being if you went with rapid charges, you're going to have to increase the size of the lines coming from the transformer into your box to begin with, a huge amount of of expense to dig that up and do that, do those changes after the fact.
One of the challenges we are, one of the benefits of being in Cave Creek. We don't have too many houses with small services being built here. Our custom homes have four, six, 800 amp service panels on them.
Makes my little 200 look not.
Yes, we don't see too many 200 amp service panels in town anymore.
Okay, well, nothing else from council that I guess we're ready to hear, hear from the gentleman from the home builders.
Jackson Mall.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor, Council members. My name is Jackson Mall. I'm the Vice President Municipal Affairs for the Home Builders Association of Central Arizona. Thank you very much for the opportunity to be here tonight to comment on the town's building code update. I understand that Mr. Backsley has forwarded the materials that we prepared for him this afternoon. So I will just kind of hit the highlights here. Going back to August of last year. We have been in touch with Mr. Backsley to discuss our issues with the 2021 codes. Fortunately, some of those issues have been addressed in the proposed local amendments. There are however, two issues that are not yet addressed that I would like to highlight this evening. First, in the Energy Conservation Code, there is a new section required for compliance that forces builders to choose one additional energy efficiency feature from a menu of about four or five options. Each of these options imposes an additional and in our view unreasonable cost to the homeowner. The reason we think it is unreasonable is because these features save so little energy that the time it would take to recover the upfronts cost is estimated to be between 10 and 240 years, depending on the option that is chosen. Keep in mind, these estimates were published in a study in June of 2021. So with the dramatic increase in the cost of construction materials and labor, I expect those repayment periods are significantly longer today. We do not believe that the government should be mandating an investment in energy efficiency that doesn't yield a return to homeowners for more than 10 years and certainly not for 35, 50 or 240 years. We have proposed an amendment to remove this requirement, which we would like this council to support. Second, there's an issue that's already been touched on with the 2020 National Electric Code, which requires a GF CI breaker to be installed on connections between a new home's electrical system and the air conditioner. Prior versions of this code did not require this. Since they were not previously required, HVAC units are not engineered for this type of connection. The result has been that in states that have adopted this requirement, there has been an immediate issue with GF CI breakers tripping. When the air conditioner ran sometimes multiple times per day. As you can imagine, non-functioning air conditioners in Cave Creek would pose an extremely dangerous condition. We have similarly proposed an amendment to remove this requirement, which we are also asking for the town council to support. To the best of my knowledge, in Maricopa County, only the city of Chandler has adopted the 2021 codes. We provided all of these same recommended amendments to the city of Chandler. Chandler did adopt both of the amendments that I am recommending tonight. And we request, as I said, that the town of Cave Creek do the same. Thank you very much for your time and I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
I've got one for you. Have you guys, the Home Builder Association got any legislation in front of downtown right now?
There, I'm, I'm, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to assume that you were talking about the housing bill that was introduced.
Were y'all thinking?
House Bill 2674. So there, there are four provisions in that bill that would be helpful for the industry in terms of providing increased supply. But I would note for the council, to the extent you have not already seen this. There was a strike everything that was introduced onto that bill that creates a study committee. The study committee will look at all the different aspects, including government regulations that limit the supply of housing or increase construction costs.
You're talking about limited supply. Have you heard of the, the drought situation at Lake Mead?
Indeed, we have.
Yeah, I would think that's an issue as well.
Yeah.
I just, you know, I just had to pick because you guys are the same ones that took away our, our development fees too. So I just, you know, with your lobbyists, I just wanted to point to that. I'm being, I'm airing my grievances at this point.
That's fine. In, Mr. Mayor, in the 10 years that I've been with the association, this is my first opportunity to appear before you.
I've been saving up.
So you can, you can get everything out, out at this point. I'm happy to answer those questions.
I can't think of anything else.
But I, I suspect that your attorney might limit us to the agenda item at hand though.
Any questions from, from council? Did you, did you have any more? I don't guess you did. Okay. We're back to council for a motion. Oh, wait, we got a new number two first. We got to adopt.
No, no, I think we, we're going to do all of this within number one. Cause it appears this packet included the resolution twice. That's okay, because the resolution does all the work. The resolution is the one that attaches all the language. And so I think if indeed all the ordinance does is that it moves to approve the resolution. Can the, so I think it's perfectly fine to proceed. If you wish to give staff direction, it would be within the guy, when you make, when you make the approval first on the resolution to adopt it as a public record plus whatever amendment, amendment you would like to do.
Well, I'll make a motion, a motion. Why, I, I moved that, that we directed, that we approved this. We said, I move that staff analyze these two issues with regard to the EVs of the card to this, this menu of four things to determine whether or not they support it and to make a recommendation to us. On whether that should or should not be in there. As I understand the EV you're recommending should not be in. But the other we have received.
GF CI too.
So. In the GF CI, which.
So the EV charger piece was.
Charger, the GF CI and the option, the four menu, energy saving option.
So the, the EV charger was removed. It has to be removed out of two books. It was removed out of one, not the second. So that should be removed. It's either remove it or I got to put it back in the second book.
Okay, so I recommend that staff direct you to remove that in this, in the motion that we're going to adopt next time. And that it be, and also remove the four, the, the four menu option, which I think is complete stupidity. And GF CI and the EV, clean up the EV.
Well, the EV is going away.
Okay.
That was, that was the first one.
That is my motion. Is it, is it clear?
As mud.
We're ready for a vote or we got comments? I don't think anybody wants to talk about international building code. Yeah, you didn't second, yeah.
Yeah, second.
Okay, now we got a second. Any comments from council?
Go ahead. Yeah, I, I, I just, this really, I, I think we have to defer to what staff wants to enforce because we're too small to go through everything. And we don't have the staff for it. And so, you know, staff kind of rules on this stuff, but boy, this stuff is hard to take. This, making other people pay useless wasted money for EVs or for I do know a lot about air conditioning and I analyzed 16 versus 13 SEER and 16 SEER makes no sense. Who wants to hear the engineering? I'm happy to talk to them about it. But that's just a comment. I defer to staff generally on this stuff.
No comment.
Okay, I'm going to blow everybody with a little story here real quick. My company has builds printing equipment and we had UL approval on some stuff. We took a unit, we had the engineers come in and do all the work on it and about six weeks later, inspector came in, inspected a unit, stopped our productions, no shipping. She, she evaluated the exact same unit we'd written the standards to, not a different month, the same machine. So this is always confusing.
Well, I'm not sure how to, exactly how to proceed. I guess, do you want me to make, to write on the spur here, write language for the motion?
I need to understand what you said. So if we could just go through the three again, so that we know we'll bring back on the second read. The text that's attached to the resolution modified, not specific language, but what the three or whatever those three areas.
Three areas is, is the one you asked for, which was the
EV charger.
EV charger. E V charger, remove the G F C I, which I think is another.
Okay.
And the third one is to remove the four options.
Okay.
Okay. And, and don't we need, don't we need to approve the resolution, making this public document first?
Well, because we only have that a while, you're, you're going to approve that as modified.
Okay.
Do a little different.
Okay.
So this resolution will approve the text as modified as public record with the amendment suggested directing staff to come back at the second read to include those amendments.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, eyes clearly have it. Now we have to do the resolution, acknowledge. That would, now we have to do the ordinance acknowledgement. Okay. And, and we kind of have, have done that. So now we need a motion on number three now. Agenda item three.
I'll make the motion.
And you got to include all the stuff that he put in the document too.
That's all right.
Are we clear? Are we still clear?
Yes, what you're going to do is you're going to read this as, you're going to read it approving the text as amended by the resolution.
Well, I've, okay, so I need to read, read number three, the intro again. Council discussion, first reading ordinance twenty twenty two dash zero one, adoption of twenty twenty one international billing code, twenty twenty one international residential code, twenty twenty one international plumbing code, twenty twenty one international mechanical code, twenty twenty national electric code, twenty twenty one international fire code, twenty twenty one international existing building code, twenty twenty one area, fuel gas code, and twenty twenty one international energy conservation code and their amendments as we have amended. Second. Got a second? Well, actually, did can we go from here? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, eyes clearly have it. Thank you, council. That, that ends our fun for the evening. So do we have motion to adjourn?
Second.
Anybody, anybody object?